Okay, we're gonna get started. Ways and Means, Baltimore City Council Ways and Means Committee. Here for Ordinance 24-0521, Ordinance of Estimates for the Fiscal Year Ending June 30, 2025. Eric Costello, Councilman from the 11th District, Chair of the Committee. To my right, Councilman Mark Conway, 4th District. Council Vice President Sharon Green Middleton, 6th District, Member of the Committee. To my left, Councilman Isaac Yitzhak Schleifer, 5th District, Member of the Committee. Councilwoman Odette Ramos, 14th District. Councilman Ryan Dorsey, 3rd District, Member of the Committee. Tony Leiva, Staff to the Committee. To my right, and we are joined by Representatives from the Mayor's and the President's Office. Department of General Services Director, you are up. If you could first please introduce everyone on your senior team that you have here, first and last name and position title, and then how much time do you anticipate needing for your presentation?
How much time do you need me to go through?
Well, let's start the negotiation off. You tell me first.
You gave us 12 last year.
It's 12. Good for you?
Yeah, 12 to 15 range works for you?
15 works.
Yes.
All right.
Wonderful.
We have agreement.
Well, thank you.
Even though he wanted to only give you six. All right, so first and last name and position title, and then take it away.
Okay. I think it will be a lot faster that I introduce myself and turn it over to everyone so that they can introduce themselves, because we rolled in deep today. And my name is Barquiatila. I am the Director of Department of General Services, and I'm gonna start with my CFO, Matt Rappaport.
Matt Rappaport, Chief of Fiscal for DGS.
Abbar Ghoutair, Chief of the Fleet Management Division.
Catherine Burns, Chief of HR.
Marwan Karajad, Chief of Capital Projects Division.
Julia Kalas, Chief of the Energy Division.
King Bennett, Acting Chief, Facilities Management.
Chris Hepler, Deputy Chief, Capital Projects.
Terrell Chester, Deputy Director.
Deputy Director?
Director, yes.
Well, we have...
Did we get this guy here? This gentleman?
He used to be my team member and a coworker together, but right now he's representing BBMR, I believe. Ben, would you like to introduce yourself?
No, he's good. Okay. Unless you want to. All right, excellent.
All right, we're ready? Okay, let me see if this clicker is working. All right. So, when I presented to you last year, I mentioned that one of our goals was to develop a strategic plan for DGS, and now, in addition to our FY '25 budget, I am really pleased to share the plan with you. This is available as printout, and we brought some copies that we could share with you, but it is also available online for you to look at it. It really features a straightforward mission statement for DGS, specifically delivering great service and deliver results for our city partners through services and solutions, and timely, cost-effective, and sustainable. What you would see in our proposed budget, that it completely reflects our strategic plan, and our goals are aligned, which is to drive success by using our data and systems to best manage operations, strengthen the level of service by engaging with our stakeholders, listening to them, and making improvements, and hiring the best and the brightest, training them, and hopefully retaining them, and to make the DGS a model of workplace for these individuals to achieve farther down the road ahead for the next generation. So, the org chart before you is that, as you know, that we have five divisions. Fleet is our largest in terms of budget and personnel. We have the Administration that houses the Office of Performance Management, HR Admin, and the Director's Office. We have the Facilities Maintenance, Capital Projects Division, Design and Construction, and newly-formed Capital, I'm sorry, Energy Division. So, the annual investment in the city's fleet actually has increased from the Master Lease program, adjusted last year from about $25 to $26 million to nearly $35 million, and then this year, that $35 million has seen an additional 4% adjustment to keep up with the inflationary cost of the assets. What you see in the budget is actually the debt service requirement of that borrowing, not necessarily the authority to purchase, so I would like to make that correction for you all. I don't want you to think that the $35 million of last year's purchasing authorities actually shrunk, the $30 million has actually gone up, but this is the mortgage on the borrowing, not the borrowing itself. You would also see that there's an increase of $750,000 in contractual services, including utilities, vehicle maintenance, and rentals, and as you know, that we do not get our funds directly from the General Fund. We do charge for our work, either through vendor repairs, or when we do our work in-house, we have direct billing. Every mechanic's wrench turning hour then gets billed to a maintenance budget that is potentially via General Fund, utility fund, or grant services. I also would like to say that Fleet continues to receive the national recognition and being named number 23 among the government fleet, and Fleet also, this year, was recognized by DHR's Employee of the Year. I am proud to say that Donald McFadden, our Automatic Mechanic, was the DHR's Employee of the Year, and our truck shop lead mechanics were Team of the Year recipients, so I'm really proud to tell that. And, most specifically, I think that we stand tall before you, because we are very proud of the Fleet's effort to support the return to weekly recycling, locating, procuring, and customizing at least 20 loadpackers to get that operations going today. That wouldn't be possible if we didn't get the additional funding that identified by ARPA, so I am very thankful to them. But I would like to also paint the picture in your minds, that just think of a draft day, and our team of Fleet individuals calling up and down the Atlantic, mid-Atlantic coast, and bartering with the orders that are coming through through other jurisdictions, and basically saying, just like, hey, if you're gonna get seven loadpackers, can you live by six? Can we get one slot from you to trade? So, this is very wonderful effort that the team has put together to be able to get this initiative going. So, also, look into the future. As you all know, the Fleet is going electric. Last December, the mayor signed the bill requiring all new vehicles in the city's administrative fleet to be zero emissions by 2030, and DGS has already procured and deployed electric vehicles throughout Fleet operations, including a few Fort Maquis for the City Control's Office, a few council members, and we have an electric growth center, WAN, for DPW, 19 more EVs for the administrative fleet, and many more on the way, EVs to provide cleaner air for our citizens. And we are already engaged with a professional services contract to study the infrastructure, because you all know that if we deploy the assets without the infrastructure to be able to charge them, that's gonna be a chaos. So, we're studying the infrastructure first while we're planning for EV replacement, so that we could use our limited funds for infrastructure for best bang for the buck. Moving into our Administration. Our Administration Division provides executive direction, because the Director's Office isn't there. We have our Communications Office, Public Relations, Council Engagement, Fiscal Management, Human Capital Management, and Performance Management for DGS. Our OPM office is our engine to provide the ability from moving from the performance measurement to management. We all understand the concept of you can't manage if you don't measure, but we're doing great at measurement, but we're now towards management. And what do I mean by performance management? And a good example would be Fleet availability report that comes out every day twice, and it can go, can seen by anybody else, that there's like, how many critical assets that needs to be on the street any given day, and how many do we have in that moment? That allows our Fleet technicians to huddle in the morning, look at where the resources needs to be deployed to meet that availability. So, that wouldn't be able to, we wouldn't be able to achieve that type of operations on a day-to-day if we weren't measuring, but we're not sitting with measurement, we're turning that measurement into actual operational data for us to be able to learn and then do things. Our proposed budget have a few transfers. We moved one of our upper positions from the Facilities Management into our fiscal side, but I will reserve those answers if you have questions about the movements of the positions and the dollars, to be efficient. So, next up is our Energy Division, and again, we're very proud that this office is now a standalone office, because it was previously only focusing on, under the capital projects, looking at energy-related improvements when it comes to facilities, design, and construction, but the energy is much more than that. Energy is the, we're working with the Sustainability Office, we're working with the DPW and the Zero Waste, Community Solar. We're looking at hedging our commodity prices and working, having strong presence into the Public Services Commission, is working with MDE, MEA. We're working with the Brick Pack to buy, we're hedging commodity prices as well as trying to get renewable energy credits, so that's why the formation of the office outside of just the design was huge importance. And this year's budget includes about $1 million, $982,000 to be specific, for implementation of building-to-grid integration system. We call them the Building Automation Systems, which really allows us to be able to monitor our buildings, to see how they are performing in real time, what time they're starting to heat, what time they're starting to cool down. If there's a system in that building actually gets to go down, we usually, what happens is if the west side of the building goes down, east side started working a lot more, so the burden goes into that system. Then that fails, we figure it out. Now, we have to react, and it's costly, and it may take some time. So, this look, the automated systems will be able to tell us if something is underperforming, we can deploy immediately then. Think about diagnostics tool as a PM, that we could interfere a lot sooner and then keep the buildings going. And as well as, if we have peak demands, that the utility cost is gonna be higher, the systems allow us to be able to schedule to work in different hours that could actually, using the same amount of power at a lower cost. And as you know, we talked about last year, that we consolidated the entire city's utility billing under us, which allows us to be able to now really good pay, pay good attention to redundant charges, erroneous charges, and anything like that, and our team has already caught some misleading bills that we have corrected, that just almost paying one or two FTEs already in terms of savings to the city by catching these errors from the utility side. And one other thing that the Energy Office does is, we are now able to benchmark our buildings in the Energy Star Portfolio Manager. This is, this is a federal, private, state buildings that go there, so when we can look at a building and decide capital improvements, we can immediately see how well we're performing within the similar buildings that is in the administrative space. And one upping that is, that we have now Energy Cap Tool to enable city agencies to manage their buildings' energy, because we have live dashboards that the city agencies can go and look at how they're utilizing their energy. Moving into Facilities Management, this division maintains and repairs municipal buildings used by the city agencies, nonprofit groups, and other NGOs, as well as surplus schools. Our proposed budget includes a redirected funding to support surplus schools, previously programmed for asbestos abatement at these facilities. DGS was getting the bill and paying them. Right now, we're, because of the cuts that we needed to do, we're shifting that burden back to the school system, but that doesn't mean that the asbestos work is not gonna be taken care of, but no longer will be paid by DGS's funds. And we are pleased to report that we're keeping our performance on preventative maintenance, and as you could, we talked about the remote work earlier, and one of the things that we want to ensure, that everybody knows, if you've attended to the capital budget's hearing, that the portfolio that DGS is responsible for every day, operating expenditures and capital expenditures, is significantly more than what the city's capacity to be able to fund these projects. So, shrinking our space, and maybe therefore getting some of our buildings off of our portfolio, they are sitting on our balance sheet right now, they are a drain, not in a bad way, but we spend money on them, and they don't produce anything, and our long-term goal to be able to shrink the size of our portfolio, and hopefully maybe move some of these assets that are on the balance sheet, moving in them to the tax base, that means they're gonna be on our income statement, they are gonna bring revenue. And in order to shrink the size of our operations, we need to rely on some sort of form of remote work. But at the same time, DGS has first time developed three things. One, now we have space playbook, we have some standards that if you are a certain type of office, you're not gonna get a large office with a adjacent conference room and a dining room and that. Those days are over now, we're controlling the new space playbook. That's the federal government, that's the state government, that's the private, that's the, they assign certain level of space and size to certain level of grade, and then we're trying to standardize work that way. We do now have a space allocation model, we call them SAM, allows us to be able to intake your operational need and transposes into like, what kind of space do you need? Then we marry that with our space playbook to tell you, this is the blueprint that you should have. With that blueprint, now we can look for city-owned space for you, we can redesign your space, or if we can't find anything that suits you, then we can turn it over to the Department of Real Estate for them to find the space that has already been signed off and approved and verified by DGS. And we are also creating space design standards, so when we're building space, they're standardized. And I believe the last but not least is our Capital Projects Division, Design and Construction. We've been changing this name forever, but they are basically in charge of any kind of capital project that is in DGS's portfolio. We do their design, and we do their construction, sometimes we do both. And that actually concludes my presentation for you. I don't know how many minutes I took, but I think we're under.
Thank you. We will start, Dorsey Schleifer. We've also been joined by Councilman James Torren, 7th District.
Thank you very much. Director, I just wanna thank you for your responsiveness and all the changes and stuff you're making to the agency. You're doing a great job, and we appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you so much. It's all about the teamwork that's around me and behind me.
Middleton?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Ditto from my colleague. Their, the recovery program just did their presentation, and they highlighted, they had a highlight on the, for the Department of General Services, and that's the Northwest Community Action Center is under construction and expected to be completed by November 2024. Can you elaborate on that? I think it's 2.5 million that's being used for that? Is that going to include more resources? And is that the 3939 building on Rice's Town Road?
I'm gonna defer to my Chief of Capital, Marwan.
Thank you. Good afternoon. Correct, it's 3939 Rice's Town Road, and currently the project is under construction. We're replacing the roof and the storefront. There would be a second phase, we are kind of replacing, we're planning on getting the HVAC and the electric cover.
Is that building open? It's completely closed.
It is open.
Oh, okay, okay.
Yep.
Okay. I didn't know about that added piece there. So, the second question, I know around the city, we are, you know, the schools are being surplus from the school system, like after a year, and they come to the city with no plan, but housing goes, usually goes through RFP with the community, and we go through that process, but there seems to still be a problem when keys are transferred to the new owners before the copper wire is, the building, consistent vandalization, and so on. Are, do you have a plan to kind of improve that process, so we don't have these continued problems?
Well, thank you for asking that question. Yes, we do have a plan. This is a really, a blind spot and a sour spot, torn on our side, whatever you wanna call it, because when we became the custodians of these buildings, we would like to get them as the condition that are being given to us, not in further deteriorated mode. There are multiple players, because DGS is usually not the direct recipient of the building. The city has an intake process from the state or the school system that first goes into HCD, and then that gets transferred to us. My team, Property Management Portfolio Services, Hillary Chester is here, she's working across the board within our internal stakeholders, as well as, we do, let me put it this way, we do have a surplus school task force, that is, we have the real estate folks at there, Capital, Chris Ryer, we have HCD, and then many other people that sit in that, we meet routinely, we look at what's coming our way, and we try to figure out what might be the best way to secure them before the keys are switched over to us, so there's not a day goes by in between that the building is not, they don't have eyes on it. I have to admit that our implementation of our plan is not at the pace that we would like to see, but we haven't given up. So, the next round of the buildings that are coming, hopefully we'll see an improvement. The things, the schools that we already have, we can't change that, because damage has already been done, so we're trying to further secure. But again, what we want to do is from day one, we have procured additional security for some of these buildings. It's called DOGS, D-A-W-G-S, I think doors, doors, awnings, windows, guards, don't quote me on that, but my team can tell you, so we have that contract in place that really makes it hard for the professional vendors to break through. But we have learned throughout the years that if they, if they have it in their minds, they will make it happen, because some of these, I would say, not a facility, they're compounds, and they're very much so vulnerable to multiple sites, and we are not just equipped to be able to provide 24/7 security there, but anything that can deteriorate, defer people even trying to get in that, that's our best bet.
And lastly, I know the city administrator had talked about apprenticeships, and we made eye contact. Do you have some good news to share about apprenticeships with your agency?
I mean, I would say, boy, do I have good news, but I'm not gonna take the spotlight from Chief Ghoutair, because he has been working on this tirelessly, so I think it's his moment to shine.
Awesome.
Yes.
Right.
So, yeah, we're, and we have seven apprentices that are currently working at our Central Garage location. They've been with us for, I wanna say, five months, our HR chief can confirm.
Was it five months?
Roughly five months. We hired them through an onsite hiring recruitment event, it was extremely successful, and then we're also working with Baltimore City Public Schools to bring on eight work-study students this summer that are gonna work with us through next year, and the goal is to kind of continue on year in, year out, with a minimum of eight to 10 students. We've established, so let me just say this, everything you asked us to do last year, we did. So, that's that.
And more.
And more. As it relates to community engagement and working with the Baltimore City Public Schools that offer automotive programs. So, the relationship is very strong. We've had the three instructors from the three high schools, Mirville, Forest Park, and Edmondson, come out to Central Garage three times in the last 10 months, and we're just trying to build on that.
Awesome. I feel your, your energy. Council, let's give them a round of applause for, start, starting off the apprenticeship, apprenticeship mood, and I'll stop there.
If I may add something, this is helpful, because we're not stopping at the apprenticeship level, we're taking, let's call it, let's not waste a disaster go to waste. In this case, Fleet has the historic high vacancies, so that's a horrible spot to be in, we can get into that, but it provides an opportunity for us to be able to block some of those vacancies and sit them tight for those apprentices to groom, to get into those positions non-competitive. So, not only bring them as apprentices, if they actually become who they need them to become, we will have the positions for them to move into.
Awesome. Thank you so much.
Of course.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Director, I really appreciate the work that you put into your team, building a great team around you, I think you've been doing a phenomenal job. I wanna circle back on a question from Vice President Middleton about the school buildings. We've got a school in my district that has also been broken into. I'm curious, for that task force, is the Police Department a part of that task force?
Which one are we talking about? The 29s?
I'm sorry, you mentioned that there was a task force.
Oh, the surplus school task.
Surplus school. Yes, yes. Forgive me for not giving the full context.
So, Hillary, if, can you, can you come up and? I would like her, because she is my committee member, and she's super engaged. If allowed, I would like her to give you a brief on the work that we do.
Hi, I'm Hillary Chester with DGS's Office of Portfolio Management and Property Services. The surplus school task force, task force will be meeting this coming Tuesday. We have not had police on this task force in the past. It's something that we would like to, to get, you know, to get on board with what we're doing. We do work a little bit with the Baltimore City Schools Police Force, once we, once we're going through the transition, and, you know, we would like to have them continue to maybe watch them a little longer than they do, because they, they stop as soon as we get the keys. So, we don't, we, the most we've had any conversations with schools or with Baltimore City Police is, you know, we let them know that it's vacant, that it's DGS, and to keep an eye on it, and, you know, I've sent emails, you know, please eat lunch in the parking lot, or what, you know, whatever you need to do, but we don't have any formal...
Yeah.
We can invite them.
I would highly encourage it, yeah.
Absolutely.
Because I know you guys need all the help you can get on securing those buildings.
We have a wonderful relationship with Commissioner Wardley, and I'm sure he will, he will staff this for us, and getting them early engaged in what are problems that create collaboration, and they might be more, I mean, it's not like they're not willing to help, I'm not trying to say that, we just haven't engaged them at the level, but happy to do so and report out on that.
Okay. Yeah, I would appreciate that, thank you. The other thing I wanna note, you guys have been doing, one, you've been more than aggressive on the EV vehicles work, really, really excited to see the progress you guys have made thus far, really proud of how, you know, Baltimore City is leading on this effort. I'm curious about the timeline and progress, you know, I know we're doing a study on charging stations, can you give me just a brief update on where we are with that?
Absolutely. Julia, you're able to produce timelines for the study?
Yeah, thank you, Councilman, for that question. Currently, the status is we, consultant has completed looking at the Fleet data, we provide them, and we have initiated in the last week meetings with each of our customer agencies to align, what does the data look like on how they're using their cars and what vehicles they have, and match that with their operational needs, so that we can match the right charging infrastructure and type to what the agency needs to get their mission completed. After we talk with the agencies, we'll be looking back at the different strategies for both vehicle selection, as well as selection of charging technology placement and management, as well as finding the most cost-effective solution that we can find for that project. Right now, we expect the study to be delivered by the end of the calendar year, expecting we get all the information that we need, and then we can work with our partners, with city council, and updating them on the deployment of that strategy.
If I may add to that, so elaborating on the data, because we have been equipping our, especially administrative fleet cantilevers, that allows us to be able to collect the mileage and the fuel, that's the data that we're analyzing to see which of these assets that in the past been driven that could fit into the EV usage, right? So, we're coming from that angle and providing that to the operations to say, if they say like, I can't use an EV because such and such, we're gonna show them, four years of usage shows us that, actually, you can, so explain yourself to us. But this is not, this is not, I mean, we're not butting heads, we're collaborating with them, and what we're also doing at the same time is, we're not waiting for the study to tell us infrastructure needs. We know we would need to put EV infrastructure on the ground, we may not know where it is gonna go right now, but we know that we would need to assign funding for it, and Julia's team is doing an amazing job already identifying funds and grants in other places to have that dollars ready, so when the study hits, we're not gonna waste time, the funding has already been identified, and then most of which are grants. And then we're gonna fund some of them from, from our operations, obviously, but having some federal grants and state grants, funding those infrastructures immediately to put people on the ground is a proud thing for us.
Yeah, that's, that's great, and I want, once again, wanna commend you, Chief, you Director, Juliette, you guys have been doing phenomenal work, and I should've asked the Office of Infrastructure about some of the efforts that we... And I should have asked the Office of Infrastructure about some of the efforts that we were applying for and what was available, but.
They are instrumental, obviously, helping us finding grants and applying.
Yes. Well, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Torrance, you have any questions?
Thank you, Director. I love the fact that the Vice President brought this up because you all know that surplus buildings is the bane of my existence right now, whether it be Lillian Jones, which one of my rec centers was shut down because of vandalism at a rec center, vandalism at the former Gilmore Elementary School, or Utah Marshburn where we're trying to figure out what to do next. So this is a request to administration. From my former work at city schools, I think that city of Baltimore is not engaged too early in the process for the COMAR hearings when we are closing schools. Just for the public understanding, by law, when we close a school, there has to be COMAR regulated hearings where there are special words that the board members as well as the CEO must recommend to close a building. And then they have to say explicitly in their motion that they're surplusing this building back to the city of Baltimore. Before we get to that motion, I think the city of Baltimore should be engaged in that process. Some requesting that the administration look at the current COMAR regulations to discuss with the Maryland State Department of Education as well as city schools about including DGS and the Department of Housing and Community Development in that earlier process. If we're going to receive the buildings back into our portfolio, we should be at the table and hearing the discussions about when those buildings will be surplus prior to they actually hitting the portfolio. In addition to that, I think we need to have a discussion with city schools as they have also received an increase from the city of Baltimore from $240 million to 497, if I believe is the correct number for this current budget year, about a transfer of funds to maintain what buildings that were damaged in the midst of the transfer back to the portfolio to the city of Baltimore, especially as we may be using those buildings for future use for other opportunities. I say this because we look at Lake Clifton, which had an extensive mold outbreak. We look at Utah Marshburn, which currently has a hairline fracture within its foundation, which makes it inoperable to actually use because we don't know if the facade will stay standing. We look at Lillian Jones where between the transfer to Elise, to Elisee from the city of Baltimore, someone stole all the copper pipes as well as the wiring, causing substantial flooding and $3 million of damage to the building. I think that the city should have a conversation with city schools about sharing that cost as well because a number of those issues occurred when they were transferring the building over to us. With that being said, I appreciate you for all your work and I look forward to the administration engaging city schools as well as our state delegation about changing COMAR regulations.
Well, thank you. Well said, and I couldn't agree with you anymore than what you said. But I, there are some good stories about the surplus schools also. I mean, it's not all bad. So Samuel Morse Elementary School, Carrollton Ridge, is now home to the Food Project, a subsidiary of the local nonprofit U and Power of Maryland. And in addition to subsidizing the property's rent, we, DGS, pays for maintenance utilities and upgraded fire suppression system and is working on a new roof for the building. The Food Project and other NGOs use the facility to provide a safe space for youth to learn how to prepare healthy food for the community as well as how to empower themselves with growing list of services. DGS has helped to bring the Pappleton Community Center back into service. Built in the early 1970s, building has fallen into disrepair. DGS is covering the facilities utilities expenses to enable operations. Working with the Southwest Partnership along with the Southwest Sports and Fitness Alliance, the community center now provides senior and adult programming during the day, youth program after school and exercise classes in the evening. So maybe not every surplus school is a bad story. We would just like to have more of these than, and less, or probably none of the vandalism stories. So we're doing our best when we can keep the building, then we will always find use. When it's vandalized, it becomes impossible because where are we going to get that $3 million to get back on track? So thank you for your recommendation. We appreciate it and we take it to heart. Not just the administration, but DGS will ensure that we will be doing everything we can to be present in those hearings.
Ramos.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Again, thank you, DGS, for all you're doing. I want to bring your attention to the Northeastern District Police Headquarters. It is in deplorable, horrible, awful shape. There are no showers for women. There is mold. There is, it's, it's just in horrible shape. I don't know how we expect our officers to do the best that they can when they have to be in that kind of environment. My understanding is that there were work orders issued or work orders asked for and not completed. And so I get that there's some complex issues going on there. Could you let me know when these repairs are going to be done and what the comprehensive timeline is for everything that needs to be done in that? And I will just preface this by saying, and I will talk about the police depart, when the police have their hearing too, it wasn't until we got a woman as a major there that this issue came before me. So having more women in leadership is going to be really important so that everybody is taken care of in a fair way. Thank you.
Well, thank you for that. And we will look at the work orders that are open, not closed, for the, the operating. And I know that we had issues with the pest control and we immediately deployed them. That's one of the things that it takes a minute. Commissioner Worley himself sent me a video that was very disturbing. But in the larger scale, as, as you may all know, that we're going through the design phases of new districts for Northeast and Northwest. So that puts us into a bit of a predicament to how much of the new upgrades for the, the building that we might be vacating that needs to come in. But that doesn't mean that the, we're not going to do anything, but we have to be very selective about where the monies should be spent. But there's no excuse if there's been work orders placed and not closed. So we will, we will follow up with my team.
What's the timeline on the new district building? And do we even know where it's going to be?
So we've, we've finished the, the site test fitting, major programmatic assessments. That's the, the first component of any design, working with the, the agency and understanding their needs, turning those needs into a blueprint, finding the site that fits that blueprint, doing the site assessments, zoning analysis, and concept design conclusion. So you will see before you, I think it's six, five agenda, that we're moving into the next phase of the designs. For those, when I say the designs, this is now going into the construction documents, production, and that we are expecting to be completed. And there are many things can go wrong because we have to now engage with the community meetings and the pushbacks. And if everything goes as planned, I think the fully designs we are expecting to be completed by the calendar year, end of this calendar year. But however, I would like to note for everyone's attention that, that we do not have sufficient funding right now to be able to construct both of them. And that's what we're exactly working with Planning Department, our Legislative Office, State, and other partners to be able to find, find the monies to construct. However, we do have more than enough to be able to finish the design for both, both, both districts. And it will have some sort of surplus left after the design is completed because the state and the city has given DGS about $25 million for this. And then this is more than enough to, to finish the designs, but not enough to do even one construction.
So, and why aren't we using the current NED? Like, why can't we just like redo the whole building or do we need a bigger building for the headquarters?
So I think on the Northeast side, we do need a bigger building. And when we, we looked at the analysis, sometimes these are, I'm going to use a technical term of Facilities Condition Index of 81%, meaning it's 80 cents on the dollar is gone in this building. And then trying to actually work within that building is just going to be more costly than building something from ground up.
I appreciate that. I'll follow up with you directly on some of the specific questions that I have about that and how we can make sure that all the council members in the NED are, in the Northeast District are aware of what's.
Whenever you need, whatever you need.
Yeah, that would be great. My second piece is the OIG issued a report, this past report, looking at the, basically the treatment of the people who cleaned this amazing building. And I had, as you know, several conversations with them. They weren't getting paid. And, you know, we are so proud to bring people into this building because they keep it so clean. And they do amazing work and they take care of our offices and certainly feel like, you know, they're not being treated well by, you know, the city. And so I just want to make sure that it's clear what, what I think needs to be done, but also that making sure that based on what the OIG report says, that they're properly compensated and that they're taken care of. But I want to just make sure that we're also having this larger conversation about whether or not we should actually be having our workers who take care of our buildings be on contract and not employees.
And first of all, I'm, I'm really happy that we were able to, to pay those employees and, and back pay that the vendor has been actually paid for but not trickled down to those employees. So that was our number one thing. In the parallel track of when the actual vendor throw the towel and told us that they will not be able to provide services any longer, I think we came together very swiftly. And I have to thank my internal partners, Bureau of Procurement and the City Administrator Office to be able to walk on that item and switch over to the new, new facility, the vendor provider. But I mean, my, my Chief of Facilities saw the writing on the wall and then start talking about the next in line company and arranged everything that allowed them to be able to immediately after the board election, not only take over all of the operations, but also consume all those employees into their governing body. We worked with them to ensure that they make the payment to them and we issued the payment to, to, to the Golden Gate. So I think we were very swift and sometimes we were slow in the city to be able to pay these invoices, but this time I think I'm proud that we were very quick to, to pay those employees. And secondly, I have, I've emailed you and talked to you in person about this. I think that I am not differing your opinion. Our results and interests are oriented in the same way here. First and foremost, employees, spaces that they work safe and clean. Second, close second to that is the people who provide the services treated fairly and compensated on time and fairly. So within that, who provides the service, I think there are opportunities for improvement and I agree with you. But I want to note this, custodial services for a city like us, when we're providing services to police stations, fire stations, health facilities in various different places that requires different skill sets and are able to be able to get those people flexibly and fast or bring them onto our side is just going to be less rapid compared to the, the contracts. And we do not right now have to manage storage. We don't have to add a layer of supervision and administration. We don't have to pay for their benefits. But that doesn't mean that there is a study or some sort of a combination of this that we could, we could do for straightforward genitorial services, maybe can be in-house and more complex allows for contractual. And I'm, as I said, I, I promise to work with you now and beyond, but we need to bring our, obviously, DHR and then fiscal office to see in tight years of budget. I don't think that the cutting the vendor services and putting the positions in there with the $50 million salary requirements already hanging over us may not be an immediate solution, but if we don't start working on it, we'll never get there. So I think it should be a part of the tangential financial plan to look at. So I'm happy to work with you on that.
I appreciate you working with me on this. Again, they, they do a great job for us, so I think they deserve, you know, I'm glad that you were able to resolve the issue fairly, not just fairly quickly, extremely quickly. So I appreciate that. But, you know, again, I want to make sure that they are treated fairly as well and I look forward to working with you on that. Thank you.
Anybody on that side of the table? You got one more? All right, one more. All right, one and a half. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I, sticking with talking about City Hall, you had mentioned earlier about making our buildings more efficient and effective. Obviously, this is an almost 200-year-old building and it's very difficult to do that. But I will tell you, the heaters are on right now and we don't need the heaters on, right? I think they're just always on in this building and, you know, we just have to modify the coolers every once in a while. Could you elaborate a little bit more about what you're planning on doing particularly for aging buildings to be a little bit more energy efficient? I'm sure this is costing us a lot of money to do.
Team, you want to take on this one?
Thank you, Councilwoman, for asking this question. We are actually in the planning phase to redesign the heating and cooling system in this building, the electrical system, the fire alarm system. We're working on getting the fund in place, but also we're engaged in the proposal phase with a design consultants to do first a study so we can get the most efficient system for this building. We know it's challenging. We know there's a lot of historical characters in this building and we want to make sure we're doing the right thing for it. So it is work in, in progress.
I appreciate that. So some of us won't be freezing all the time, but hot when we come downstairs. So I appreciate that.
This was a conversation that I had with my Chief of Facilities. Do we, do we crank the, the AC all the way up and then be cold or just so then it is easier to take it down or just like not get the AC for the council hearings? And we know that it's just impossible for this building because as you said, this building was designed pre-AC and then it partitioned in a way that it's really not efficient.
Got it. Well, I'm, I'm heartened to know that there's some progress there. Last year, I asked a, my second question and last one for right the second. I asked a question about the fact that since we want to shut down the incinerator at some point in time and it provides energy for several buildings downtown. And I wanted to get a sense of, I think the answer was last year we were looking into alternatives because there will have to be an alternative for a source for that steam if we no longer have the incinerator working. That's obviously a, you know, seven, eight year, you know, timeframe if we don't end up, you know, redoing the lease in seven years. But that means that we will have to figure out what the, I'm in favor of closing it, by the way. But so I just want to make sure that we're also understanding what that alternative is going to end up being.
We'll do a two-part on this one. Julia, I'll start and then I'll hand it over to you. So this, this, for example, for, for DGS, we have another obligation over the years that we need to maintain because the state moved into building energy performance standards and certain buildings that, I mean, City Hall is not part of this and historical property is not part of this, but the city has many buildings that is going to be part of, part of this requirement that they need to move away from the fossil fuel to the renewable energy or electrifying the source. As you know, most of our buildings are not directly connected to the power by us, but we work with Vicinity, who is the, the regional steam and chilled water provider. And in order for us to decarbonize, Vicinity needs to work to, to change their source. And then what, what we are working right now is any project that we are currently upgrading that is depending on fossil fuel, we're retrofitting with heat pumps, so that's what we're doing. But at the end of the day, again, we do not directly source. The power is downstream from Vicinity and we're in engagement with them and a lot of conversations with ME and MDE about how it will impact their decisions, our ability to deal with it. So if Julia wants to add anything else, please do so.
Yeah, absolutely. So we've had conversations with Vicinity that they are able to operate their systems fully off natural gas if necessary. Of course, that doesn't help us to solve the climate crisis and to meet the mayor's goal for greenhouse gas reductions. So we have talked to them about their plans, looking at electrification of some of their system. They've started to demonstrate that in Boston. So we've talked to the city of Boston and the city of Philadelphia who have similar systems, just to take some lessons learned so we can maybe skip a few steps and looking to something that's going to be a large investment for the city to work with Vicinity and other private partners. I also want to mention we're working with the state because this is a large system that isn't just about us as customers. It's about, you know, us as the downtown campus, talking to Maryland Department of Environment about, you know, what it would take to get the system off of either natural gas or the steam from the incinerator as well as Maryland Energy Administration. So we've chatted with them, trying to see what the alternatives are, and some of those solutions may be longer than the seven or eight years that we can make sure that we're on the pathway to the most efficient way to reduce climate change.
Thank you. I appreciate that. We're looking at all options because it is a goal to close, to shut it down, but we certainly don't want to go backwards in our climate goals. So I do appreciate that. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Anybody else? All right. Thank you to the entire DGS team for everything you guys are doing and we are now in recess.
Thank you very much.